Uh zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the Town of New Canaan for today's date is April 6, 2020. Thank you all for coming tonight. How it will work, we will call your, we'll call you and then
Say your name.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry?
Say your name.
Oh, this is Laura Edmonds. And what, as we call you, please, each time you speak, please say your name as we are being recorded. There are people that are on the phone, the telephone, and so this will be recorded and it will be able to be viewed at a later date on Channel 79. Is it, is it Lynn that we, you are going to be the only one who is able to speak? Can you, can you tell us how that's gonna work?
Talk, I'll unmute everybody as it's their turn.
And should they signal or how should they get our attention in order to?
They either raise their hand in the window or they should, they can send me a chat. If they're on the phone, I'll individually call them at each item. Or they can also, there's a raise hand icon on the chat window which you, they can pick. And it pops up on my screen and I can see that they want to talk.
Okay. So are, are we ready to go on to the first item? Is there any other? Oh, is it, is it Cynthia? Is she here? Did we need to say hello to our new member Cynthia Dole? Is she on the line?
Cynthia.
Yes, I am. Cynthia's here.
Hi Cynthia, we, I know you have not been, been able to be sworn in yet, but I know that you have been appointed. But we do want to welcome you to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Cynthia will be listening in this evening and won't be voting on the variances. That correct Lynn?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we just need to do a roll call to make sure who's present. So I'm gonna unmute all the ZBA members. And do you want to run through the roll call or do you want me to call everyone's name?
You could call, you could do it. That's fine.
Okay. So one second while I unmute everyone. Okay. Laura Edmonds?
Present.
John Mahoney?
Present.
Ben Bielis?
Ben is here. I see him.
Present.
Perfect. Thank you. Jessica Cardone?
Present.
And Luke Toshian? Luke, fix your audio.
Luke?
Luke, try speaking again?
Does that make a difference?
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Becky Walsh?
Present.
Perfect. Where's?
We have Rich Carrot too.
Yeah, I just gotta find his little name. Give me one second. Rich Carrot too?
Present.
Thank you. And then first off, we have Ben Winter and myself Lynn Brooks-Savney. And Town Council Pete Gelderman is sitting in on the call also. Laura, you can go, you can start the meeting.
Okay, so first up on our agenda is 316 Talmadge Hill Road. Is there, who is here for?
That is Wayne. We are having a problem with his audio.
Okay.
So he's, he's here, but it's a property at, I'll give you, Wayne, you can chat with me if you think it's wrong, but um, it's, as you saw in the Planner's Memo, it's, it's a property at 316 Talmadge Hill Road. And they want to construct an addition onto the principal residence in both the front yard setback and and they're gonna go over the maximum allowable building coverage for a two acre property. And I'm going to, I'm gonna share my screen. I'm gonna show you where it is so you can see it. So hold on one second. Can you see it?
Yes.
It's 316 Talmadge Hill Road. It's on the corner of Talmadge Hill and Old Stamford Road. It's right down the street from the Mayor Parkway. One second. This is their site plan. And you can see on the screen where they want to put a, the addition. There's a small, it's a small addition. This is, they're in the two acre residence zone. This is their setback information. They are currently 37 feet from their front yard, from the front, from their front setback. They're gonna remain 37 feet. They're going to, sorry, I can't. All their setback information, they're, they're not gonna, and then they're gonna be over their maximum, the maximum allowed building coverage. They are, they're gonna, they're allowed 2992 square feet and they're gonna have, they currently have 2,579 and they're gonna have an, with their addition, they're gonna be at 3,279 square feet. Wayne, do you have anything to add that, do you want to type anything in that you want me to say? One second Laura, we're, he's typing. The addition is only in the rear. The overage on the coverage is due to the carport, which is an area already used for parking. And
Isn't he redoing the garage as well?
Wayne, can you respond whether you're redoing the garage as well? The garage is to be rehabilitated and it's being built, it was built originally in 1965. Ben has a, Ben, Ben Bielis has a question for him. Just wait one second Ben, I'm gonna unmute you. Ben Bielis?
Hi, Ben Bielis, and we are not here to discuss the garage though, right?
Wayne, can you respond in writing for me please? Yes, that will be handled via special permit, but it's brought up only to the extent that it affects the overage on the coverage. Does that answer your question Ben?
Oh, I see. Okay.
Wait, Luke Toshian has a question. Hold on one second. Luke?
I thought they were speaking of variance for the side yard setback and for the coverage because of the garage. There's two variances.
They are seeking a, the principal resident is in the front yard setback and they're gonna go over the maximum allowable building coverage.
So the only reason P&amp;Z is involved is because the garage is in a front yard because it's a corner lot? Or what's P&amp;Z's role in this?
I don't actually, it's a non-conforming property in the two acre zone. Cause it's, it's 150 feet. Are you, Wayne, remind me, you're in the 150 foot setback, but it's pre-existing. Why are you going for a special permit? Oh, because it affects the coverage on the accessory structure in the front yard. That's it.
Okay. Okay. I have no other questions.
So is it two, is it two variances or it's one?
Two.
Two. It's for coverage and they're in this, they're in the setback. They're in the front yard setback.
In the front yard setback for the garage.
Wayne, type it in. Type it in. John Mahoney has a question. Hold on, I'm gonna unmute him for a second. John, you can
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Couple of questions on the coverage. It, it appears coverage is being impacted by the carport, the expansion of the garage, and then the cantilevering of the second floor to the rear. What is the relative amount of each one of those three? And then follow-on question is, what's the hardship for getting the, for the increase in coverage? Because it appears you're 10% or so over the max coverage.
Wayne, can you? Give him one second. He's typing. It's just for the house which is existing. The addition to the garage is approximately 100 square feet and the house is 150 square feet.
I'm sorry, say again Lynn?
John Mahoney. The, it's just for the house which is existing. The addition to the garage is approximately 100 square feet and the house is 150 square feet.
Okay, and then, so the carport then is
John, just state your name. John, just state your name.
It's John Mahoney.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
What is the amount then of the carport?
420 square feet Wayne says.
Okay, and the hardship then?
Wayne, can you type in your hardship? And while you're typing, Luke Toshian just raised his hand also, so I'm gonna open, I'm gonna unmute him.
Is, is the carport on any of the site plans? It's only noted in the, in the architectural drawing. I thought I printed everything on this file, but I don't see it on any of the plans.
Yeah, it's Laura Edmonds. Could he explain what he's gonna do to the car, to the carport?
Okay, Wayne, can you type in what you're gonna do to the carport? And he responded to an earlier question, I believe, from John Mahoney that the existing lot that predates zoning in New, in New Canaan is consistent with the neighborhood and zone, and the zone. In your response to the hardship question.
It doesn't really, I, I understand that, I guess I, I'm not sure then why, what the rationale is for going 10% over the allowable zone, the allowable coverage for the lot. What, what's the hard, I mean, the zoning, I, it, it was built in an earlier zoning, is that? I'm not sure what's unique about this property with regard to coverage.
Wayne, if you would type in your, your response, I'm gonna unmute Jessica Cardone. She had a question. Hold on one second.
Hi, this is Jessica Carden. To me, I understand you're raising the topography and the extreme nature of it as per the hardship. That may be the case as far as the setback, but I'm having trouble understanding what the hardship would be as far as the coverage issue. So if that could be addressed in the notes.
Wayne, could you just respond? Can you respond in the chat window for me please?
Where's the chat?
His, his response is that the garage will be rehabbed with a loft area. The carport will simply roof over the area currently used for parking.
Could you say that again Lynn? This is Laura Edmonds. I, I just, so I'm a little clearer on that. Can you say that again?
Sure. The garage will be rehabbed with a loft area. The carport will simply roof over the area currently used for parking.
So there's gonna be a loft above it? Is that what you think? Like a loft to live?
Not a, I don't believe it's a habitable. Wayne, can you confirm that it's not habitable?
It's Laura Edmonds, if it's for storage?
It's not habitable. So just for storage Wayne? Can you confirm that in writing, please? Yep. That's, that's his understanding. It's not habitable and it'll be used for storage.
Wait, can you hear me? This is John Mahoney. It seemed to me that the plans had a half bath there, so it's gotta be more than storage. And there, and there is a deck above the carport if, I mean, it looks like there's a deck above the carport. Perhaps I'm misreading it.
Can, Wayne, can you respond in the text box? It's, it's supposed to be, he responded, it's a game room. No sleeping or food preparation.
Oh, but it's Laura Edmonds. It's finished.
It's gonna be finished, right Wayne? Just, can you confirm that? I believe that yes, it's finished. It's finished.
This is John Mahoney again. I, I guess, I mean, I, I understand the topography is, and the layout of the lot is a hardship for why the garage needs to have work done to it. I don't quite understand the hardship still for the, the overage on coverage.
Wayne, could you just type in like a clarifying answer?
I'm not, I'm not sure what's unique about this property relative to other properties where, where zoning changed since the building was built.
Ben, you can speak. You're unmuted. Ben Bielis?
Ben Bielis, I'm a little confused by this application. Where on the site plan do I find the carport? I see two-story addition, second floor addition, cantilevered over first floor. There's a deck, retaining wall, a building, patio, pool. I, where is this carport that's adding to the coverage?
Ben, it's John Mahoney. If you, do you see where the garage is?
Yeah, one story, one-story two-bay garage.
Yes, and then there's a line that, you see the dotted line to the left of it? Where it says picket fence?
Oh, yes.
And there's, there's an arrow that lands there that says proposed carport. I, I'm assuming that the dotted line there is the carport.
I'm, I'm, thank you John, but I still don't see the proposed carport. But you say it's somewhere between the garage, the existing garage and the hu, and the house?
Yeah. Wayne, can you just respond to that in writing? Luke Toshian has his hand up.
I think the carport is only on the architectural drawings. I don't think it's on the site plans. That's what I asked before and no one answered it. It was the same question.
The, Wayne's response says that similarly, the carport is a continuation of the same use. Had this been a standard lot in the zone, the areas would be well within the allowed gross coverage of 5,200 square feet.
Could you repeat that? This is Ben.
Wayne's response was similarly, the carport is a continuation of the same use. Had this been a standard lot in the zone, the areas would be well within the allowed gross coverage of 5,200 square feet.
Carport is a continuation of this, this is Ben Bielis. Same use as the garage?
Wayne, do you want to clarify? The carport is to the left of the garage to the west of the property.
It, Ben Bielis, is it apparent on the site plan?
Wayne's response to your question Ben is that there's a label with an arrow pointing to it on the site plan?
Well, I'll, Ben Bielis, I guess I'll take your word for it. I just don't see the label. Or the arrow. To the left of the garage.
Ben, it's John Mahoney. I think it's, it, it's that same label that's, the label is off to the right of the garage, says proposed carport. And it points to an area to the left of the garage, right above the box that says picket fence.
We're looking at the site plan. Draft copy for review only.
I am looking at what looks to be a survey that has at the bottom of it, the lot coverage calculations, et cetera. It was a document called site-sit-plan.pdf.
Right survey. I'll look at that.
No, not that one Ben. That doesn't have it. It's the very first document in the
Site plan. Oh boy. That may be beyond my capacity to see. I see the garage, picket fence. Proposed garage addition. Uh huh. Proposed carport and it's over there. Got it. Okay.
And, and you see it's John Mahoney again. You can see the dotted line that I think outlines the scope of the carport. It, it goes off of the proposed addition. Goes off to the left or to the west and north and jogs back and goes around the front of the garage.
Ben Bielis, so from the, it's meant to be a cover for people exiting the garage and going to the house? So it's not really a carport?
Doesn't look, it doesn't look to me, I mean, I would defer to Wayne, but it does not look to me like it goes to the house. There's a concrete lock. I think it's a carport.
Wayne, could you respond in text?
And Luke has, Luke has a question.
Yeah, Luke does. Jessica has a question first. She, so Jessica?
I mean, I'm having a similar visualization issue. I'm trying to figure out if the deck that was on the plan is definitely above the carport that's proposed. The reason I'm trying to confirm that is I think they're trying to argue that this would be the extension of a similar use as far as the carport would be where they're parking the cars right now. But if there's a deck above it, I take issue with that as being the same use. But that's why I need to understand the plan.
So Wayne responded, before you speak Luke, just one second. Wayne responded and said, just below the label for the garage, he would call it a carport roofed, no walls, not connected to the house.
And And.
Luke, wait, Ben, wait one second, because Luke had his hand raised. So, Luke, Toshin? Luke? Wait, Luke, you gotta raise your audio. We can't hear you.
Start over, Luke.
Can't hear you, Luke.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear? Go ahead, now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know why my microphone goes in and out. Um, it's planned, as I said before, look at the architectural drawings. It's Plan A1, the same one that Ben mentioned before that shows the bathroom above the garage and the deck above the carport. It's just a carport next to the garage.
Yeah.
Laura, Ben Byless has a question as well.
Ben Byless, I see it, and it doesn't look like cars are gonna park there. So why is it being called a carport? It's a cover of some sort, no? Or?
The structure is already there, isn't? And are you, so you're adding to the structure that is already in place?
Um, they're showing, Wayne's response is that they are showing the carport having a flat roof deck. Cars are going to park under it as they do now.
Sorry, Lynn, Ben Byless, could you repeat that? You're breaking up a little.
Sure, sorry. He said, Wayne said that they are showing the carport having a flat roof deck. Cars are going to park under it as they do now.
Okay, okay.
Rich?
Oh, wait, let me open, let me, let me unmute you. Sorry. Rich, you can speak.
Yes, Rich Keratou. So the way I'm reading this, someone pulls in from Tommich Hill, directly opposite the train station parking lot. Like, I did visit the site. Uh, so as they drive in, uh, either they go into the garage or they could go to the right and park in the carport. And then it looks like there's gonna be steps from the garage to and from the carport. Is, is that correct, Wayne? If, can you confirm that?
Wayne, can you type in a response to confirm the question?
So they're just gonna be using it, already using it for our park?
So he's not, Wayne's response, he's, he's not sure if there's access from the second floor to the roof over the carport.
Right, that, I, I understand that. And by the way, I meant to the left as you drive in, it's to the, the carports to the left of the garage, but can you get from the carport to the first story in the garage? It seems to be a set of stairs from the first story in the garage. Are you exiting the garage, going under the carport?
Can you type a response, Wayne? He think, Wayne's response is that he thinks it's one step down to the carport.
Okay. Because it, again, Rich Keratou, it appears that the carport then is connected to the garage.
Is that correct, Wayne? Can you type that in?
So there's no daylight between the garage and the carport, if you're able to step in, so that's a large carriage area.
Yes, Wayne just typed in yes, Rich, in response to your question, Rich Keratou. Laura, Ben Byless has his hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Ben.
Ben Byless, um, is the space that is gonna be covered as a carport presently being used, park cars, is that why we're saying that the use is consistent with the existing use? Okay, so what, is there no cover on that space?
Yes.
There is a cover.
He's shaking his head and he's, he wrote yes in the text window.
This is a new, a new, bigger cover.
He's gonna respond in writing.
You may be hearing my dog. I apologize.
Correct, there's gonna be a new cover, Wayne said.
And that adds to, I'm, it's Ben Byless, and that adds to the total overage on the building coverage allowable. Is that right? Okay.
Shaking his head, yes. There's no cover currently, he said, and correct, it will add to the coverage.
Thank you.
Do we have any comments from the board? I mean, is, is there confusion with the plans? I mean, how are, we, we seem to be at a little bit of a standstill, or? Rich?
Yes. Now, I, I personally could visualize it, and I did see it. I, I think the overriding question that I, I'm not getting grasp in the answers is what the hardship, I mean, so just to summarize, they're extending the garage, they're building a loft over the garage, they're extending their covered parking area so that their cars are covered. So it's a, you know, a setup coming off of Tommich Hill. And then they have additions to the overall house. And I mean, I can understand why one would want to do this. But I still don't grasp what the hardship is.
So Wayne, could you just type in the, an answer to the hardship? Laura, Ben Byless has his hand up also.
Okay, go ahead, Ben.
Ben Byless, you said this earlier, but I can't remember. How much coverage does this carport add?
Okay, so, um, while you were asking a question, Ben Byless, Wayne answered the previous question. Um, the response is the coverage is still well below what a standard two-acre lot would be, which is 5,200 square feet versus what they're, they're gonna have 3,279 square feet. This is an undersized lot due to pre-existing zoning and a taking approved by ZBA earlier.
What was that last line, Lynn?
And a taking approved by the ZBA earlier?
Yeah, I saw that. I don't understand the relevance of that.
It was, it was a taking of 1,500 square feet.
Oh. Could be used for the parking lot or something?
Wayne, could you just write a response? Laura, Luke Toshin has his hand raised.
And I think John does as well.
Okay.
Go ahead, Luke. Luke?
Luke, fix your, fix your audio.
Microphone.
No, he's unmuted. No, we can't.
He's having trouble with his microphone. Thank you.
It looks like he's muted from what I see.
Oh, there he is. Now he is. Let's unmute you again. Luke, try speaking again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if there wasn't the 1,500-foot taking, would this be under the coverage ratio? Because it seems like that's pretty, to me, pretty strong grounds if the state comes and takes a portion of your property and you have no say about it. You know, it'll kick you under the coverage ratio.
Um, Wayne's response was that it was to expand the right of way, which would likely have been Old Stanford. Wayne, do you want to respond to, um, Luke Toshin's question? And Laura, John Mahoney has his hand raised as well.
Okay. John?
Um, well, first of all, I, I personally don't have a problem with changes to the garage with the issue of it being in the 150-foot setback, given both the topography and the layout of the spot. The, the 1,500-foot taking, um, would have given them an additional 4% or 60 feet of coverage if that had not happened based on, um, uh, 3.5D1 in the zoning regs. So I don't think, I, Luke, I get you with that. I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm there with that part of it, but I'm ha, I'm really having a hard time with the, the, the coverage issue. I, I'm just not seeing the, you know, the hardship for coverage that far over. I'm happy to give them the 60 square feet. I don't know that it does anything. But I'm having a hard time with the 10% overage.
Um, John, Wayne tech, Wayne wrote in before that, um, in response to the earlier question, that, um, with the taking, it would be closer, but still slightly over the allowed.
Well, but I don't understand that math, because if you take 1,500 square feet times 4%, it gets you 60 square feet, right? And we're almost 300, I forget, let's see, I've got the survey up here.
Here, Wayne wrote in about 65 square feet.
We're, we're, we're right now 100 and, or 279 square feet over, uh, what it would be. So, you know, we're still 200 feet over.
Yes, Wayne just wrote in, he said about 220 square feet over.
Wayne, would you consider potentially going back? If we, um, maybe continue this, would you consider maybe going back and redoing some of the plans and maybe representing at a different date? It seems like, just from some of the members of the board, it doesn't seem like, um, you know, maybe members feel comfortable moving forward. We can't promise that even if you do come back, that it will be, your variance would be approved, but maybe if we have another go at it, um, you might be able to get some folks to, you know, rethink it.
Wayne, can you just write back your response for me, please? Thanks.
Do the board members feel comfortable with that?
All, all of the board members are currently unmuted, so you can all respond to Laura's question.
Yes.
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 Um, he's gonna, Wayne responded that he can see if the owner would like to reduce the carport by half, which would then be under the coverage.
Okay, if, if that's how he would like to get, so do we say what we're going to table it for another month, or how do, how should we, what should we say there, Lynn?
Um, Wayne, so I guess the question from the board is, would you be comfortable coming back at the May 4th zoning board meeting with revised plans? Or with a more clear application so that they can understand what's happening? Yes, he's gonna check with the owner, and if that's what the owner chooses, that's what they'll do.
Okay.
So do you want to keep it open?
So with that, yes, we'll keep that, we'll keep this open, this item open, so for that, uh, 316 Tommich Hill Road.
Do you need a motion, or are we?
Do we need a motion for that, Lynn?
Um, I think you can table it, but, um, there's no, it's gonna remain open, but you can keep.
Just asking, not a suggestion.
Got it. Keep me straight there, John.
That's right.
Okay, so, um, you're good with that, Wayne?
Wait, yes, he is. So Wayne, I'm gonna mute you now, even though we can't hear you anyway. So you're welcome to stay on, or you can sign off, but, uh, we're gonna go on to the next.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you. Okay, we're going to.
I'm gonna unmute, um, Leo and Jennifer Gaspar, because they're the next applicant.
Okay, that's 43 Crystal, correct?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is 43 Crystal.
Hello.
State your name and, uh, your variance request.
Uh, my name is Jennifer Gaspar, and we're requesting an after-the-fat variance. There was an error made on our deck building of six inches. We had a variance before that was approved, and under the condition of that variance, we had to build our deck along with our other things that we did within away from the setbacks. We couldn't be in the setbacks, but because of a few string of errors, we are six inches into the setbacks. And because of our constraint of our property and some other things, we were hoping that we could get it approved.
Laura, it's John.
Hi, John.
Um, how high is the deck off the ground?
Four feet.
Four feet?
Our, our property slopes and is the highest point.
Highest point.
Is close.
Yeah.
It's close to this side of the property that we are over is four feet high.
Okay, and you're, uh, have you talked to the neighbors and what is their feeling about it?
The neighbor on that side of the property that we're over, it, we actually got a letter, should be in your packet, that shows that they support, that it's okay with them. It's not.
It should have been posted in the application package, so it would be in the application, like, not the presentation.
Okay.
It's Erin and Kristen Hall.
Two.
Yeah, it's here.
Do you see it?
Yep.
And along that side of the property, they're, they have a fence, are, their side of the house is there. It's not infringing on any of their enjoyment of their property.
Laura, Richard Keratou has a question.
Go ahead, Rich.
Yes, Richard Keratou? Uh, yeah, I just would like the homeowners to confirm again that while the deck was being built, they were not aware that you were going over six inches. You said a string of errors, and so you, yeah, I just want to confirm and you state for the record that you were not aware while it was being built that you, you were going over.
No, we were not aware that we were going over. Um, with the architectural design, we actually had an architect design it, um, and it was measured in and with, with the property line and, um, but he didn't take in consideration the but he didn't take in consideration the siding and everything. And then the builder of the deck, they suggested centering it between our window and the back door and adjusted it, but they didn't adjust it to the three inches, when the size of the deck, three inches less when they did that. And then, I just weren't experienced, and we should have had a survey done while, before it was built, and to exact placement of the property line. We saw the two posts, which wasn't right at where we were building the deck, and we strung it. But from where we strung it, it looks like we still had an extra three inches. So we thought we were building it within.
Laura, Luke has.
Had a three-inch leeway still with our air.
Luke? Go ahead, Luke.
Luke, can you, you're unmuted. Can you speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
If you get approval for 15 feet, and you go exactly to 15 feet, then they should be at 15 feet. I mean, you're going right up to the 15 feet.
I know.
I mean, if you're going exactly to what's allowed, you need to make sure you're exactly where it's allowed.
That was a mistake. We should have told them, like, make it smaller, so if we don't run the risk of getting to this problem, we end up having it. And I am sorry, and like, we didn't mean this to happen. There is no, like, I'm embarrassed to be here right now, to be honest.
Well, why can't you just cut six inches off the side?
The posts where they're located, as far in as they can be, we would have to take the deck down and move.
Re-dig the posts.
The posts and move them over in order to do the deck again.
We need a hardship to grant a variance, and an economic hardship isn't grounds that allows a variance.
I understand. But our property is very small. We're not going over our coverage. It's not devaluing anything in the neighborhood.
I feel like it's pretty de minimis, you know, the request is, we've seen a lot worse when it comes. Typically, we don't necessarily look favorably on after-the-fact requests. But I feel like in this case, it's pretty de minimis, a pretty de minimis request. Rich?
Yes, I mean, I've been in this situation with other items, and I guess six inches, if there was an intention to do this sort of, you know, what do they say? Better off asking for forgiveness than permission. I don't think this is the case here, and just go over six inches is really de minimis. So, I mean, normally what I've seen, and that I would propose to the board is, I don't know if there's some mitigation shrubbery or just something, if that even makes sense. But, you know, in my opinion, it is sort of de minimis. And the big lesson here is that you need a survey done to start any project and have it staked out by the surveyor so that the architect and the person putting up the deck or any building structure follows those plans and the stakes that are laid out. So that's the big lesson. But, you know, maybe there's a proposed mitigation of some shrubs or something. But I do agree that six inches is de minimis, in my opinion.
I agree with Rich, and I don't think the.
Ben, do you want to state your name?
It's Ben Byless. I think six inches, it was an honest mistake. I happen to know these people, and I know they wouldn't do this on purpose. And I can't speak on their behalf, but if ever there were people who deserve a little forgiveness, it's Leo and Jennifer. So I'd like to just have it considered de minimis.
Jessica, what do you think?
I think it seems pretty de minimis, too. It sounds like they made some efforts to make adjustments during the building process. Unfortunately, maybe relying a little too hard on the people they were working with were supposed to be the subject matter experts here, the architect, the builder. Not knowing how to build a deck, I would probably be in the same position myself of having to rely on those experts. And it sounds like the shape of the lot and the sizing is really what makes it a hardship as far as the reason for the after-the-fact variance. And also, just to note, it is only six inches at one side. It does slope in at five inches. So we're not even talking about six inches across the whole length of the deck.
Correct.
John?
Yeah, it's John Mahoney. I would agree. I think it's de minimis. I think that, you know, the property itself is well into the setback now because it already existed, and the deck is well set back from the edge of the building. I think this was an honest mistake, and to me, as everybody else has said, it's de minimis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to go? Do you want to say anything else, add anything else to this?
We're just sorry that we are wasting your time. We really are. It was an honest mistake, and we've learned a lot through this building process. So we appreciate it.
Well, like we said, we really rely on the experts to guide us through it, and sometimes they don't always hold up their end of the bargain. Okay, are we ready to go? Is there anyone here on the line to speak in favor of this variance?
Laura, let me just open the line for the one phone call I have and see if they are.
Okay.
The phone number ending in 7047. Are you here to speak on this item at 43 Crystal?
No.
Okay, awesome.
So there's no one else on the line to speak, Lynn, correct?
There is no one else.
To speak on this item?
There's no one else to speak on this item that I can see, because I can see everyone's name at this point, and that was the only one that I couldn't see.
Okay. So we are going to go into the business session for this item. Can I hear a motion?
Ben Byless, and I move to approve the variance request, or the after-the-fact variance request.
John Mahoney second the motion.
And it's based on, do we need a?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a de minimis error, and the property is situated in such a way, and the overage is not great. I don't know. What did Jessica say before?
I think the shape of the lot is small, comparatively speaking, I think, compared to the zoning area. Also, it sounds like, like you said, de minimis, that they basically have to deal with the size of the lot. And also that it does slope in, the error that they're seeking the variance is only a maximum of six inches, but does narrow into five inches. I don't know.
It always does, Jessica. You always do. Can we hear a second for that, to John Mahoney?
Yeah, Mahoney seconds.
Okay. And so Luke, can you start the voting for us?
Can you speak?
One finger is yes, two fingers is no.
Yes, is that a yes?
That was a yes.
You have to say.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
When I get unmuted and unmuted for some reason, like shuts off on my end, apparently. I don't know why, but I'm in favor of it.
Luke, can you just state your name for your vote?
Luke Tastian. And I'm in favor of the motion to approve the variance.
Okay, John?
Mahoney in favor.
Ben?
Byless in favor.
Jessica?
Carden in favor.
Laura Edmonds in favor. Your variance is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate it.
Okay.
Kitchen turned out beautifully, guys.
That was part of the addition. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome to stay on or?
We're going to say goodnight because we have to bed.
All right, thank you.
Okay, bye.
Bye.
And now I'm just going to unmute Amy Suchin's. Laura, you're going to have to read the appeal of the order on the agenda.
So I have on my agenda Weed Street, but that's not happening.
Did what?
119 Weed, which is not.
119 Weed asked to extend, they gave us a, they gave us an extension to extend the opening of the public hearing until May 4th.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the order of appeal is this, David Barkotos and Jennifer Home, owners of 1328 Smith Ridge Road, appeal the issuance of a zoning permit issued to Grace Farms Foundation, Inc. on February 15, 2019, for the renovation of existing storage space into office, garage, and storage space in the West Barn located on the Grace Farms property at 365 Luke's Wood Road, map 61, block 38, lot 77.
Amy, you're unmuted.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Amy Suchin's here representing David Markatos and Jennifer Home, who are here also on screen and are the appealing party. As noted in the agenda, we have appealed the issuance of a zoning permit for alleged renovations to the West Barn, and then the subsequently issued building permit and certificate of occupancy reliant on the underlying zoning permit. I think, as everybody will recall, we were here before you back in the fall, September and October 2019, with a similar issue relating to the operations center at the front entrance of the property. So we are basically tonight talking about the same legal issue with respect to interpretation of the 2017 special permit that was issued to Grace Farms, but on a different set of facts as relates to the West Barn portion of the building. So just to walk you through, we have included in our original application filing affidavits from my clients, highlighting the fact that they had just found out about the issuance of this zoning permit in connection with some construction they saw operating on the property and discovered the issuance of the permits, copies of the relevant floor plans and the permits, and, most importantly, the governing special permit for Grace Farms from 2017. So I wanted to start with that, just to remind everybody what the issues are with respect to that permit. And there are a couple of conditions for, in particular, that I want to highlight for you that will come up over the course of tonight's discussion. Most importantly, condition six, which reads, "There shall be no material change of the approved use or intensification of any use unless specifically authorized herein." And that's similar, that was the same condition that was at issue in the operations center appeal. And there are also some other relevant conditions. Number 10, notes that no accessory use of the property beyond what is specifically approved hereunder is allowed. I don't think there's been any position by the foundation or staff that this was some sort of accessory use, but I just wanted to highlight that for the members. Number 30, which frankly relates to the operations center for the most part, but is relevant when it gets to a discussion and what Grace had proposed to the planning and zoning commission as far as modification of that condition. And then the other condition that's relevant is number 41, which reads, "While 82 Pudding Hill Road (lot and buildings) has been incorporated into the special permit, it exists as a single-family dwelling, and no other use is approved at this time." And that leads into sort of how we get here with respect to the issues and the renovation of the West Barn. So if you look at that language that I had just read in condition 41, 82 Pudding Hill Road is an existing property, it had a single-family home, and was incorporated into the special permit at the time that that was issued in 2017. So when that, is everybody else getting some background? Sorry, okay. So Lynn, if you could look at the document that we had submitted entitled GFF Representations, if you could put that up on the screen, there are a couple of things that I wanted to highlight for the staff members, or excuse me, for the commission members.
Can you see it?
I can see your list. I can't see the actual document, but that is the correct document.
Okay.
So if you could open up that one.
Oh, I see what, you know what? Okay, wait one second. Let me see if I can share it differently. One second. Can you see it now?
I can.
Okay, just a little technology glitch, sorry about that.
Sure, that's okay. And I did try and note some page numbers, so hopefully we can scroll down. So the first thing I wanted to highlight, so this is the 2017 management plan that was submitted, obviously, by the foundation as part of its special permit application. And Lynn, if you could scroll down to the bottom of what's marked page three, I did note the language that I wanted to highlight. Right there, perfect. So what I wanted to highlight was the fact that the foundation's representation at this point was to seek office approval, excuse me, relocate part of the foundation's maintenance and staff parking and offices, presently located in the West Barn and shed at the south end of the property, to 82 Pudding Hill parcel and the first floor of the structure. So what the commission understood, planning and zoning commission understood, was that there was a request to expand and move offices that were in the West Barn to 82 Pudding Hill Road. And as you heard with respect to condition number 41, that was ultimately not permitted within the 2017 special permit. And then on the second page, or excuse me, the next page down, Lynn, middle of the page, also noted, right there, the foundation also represented, and the third starts on the end of the second line, that the foundation said, "It has no plans of its own to increase the pace of its activities, nor are there any plans to develop the property or expand the present structures except as noted to put the 82 Pudding Hill Road residence to use and evaluate an overflow parking situation." If you scroll down to the next document, there's another, it's about 10 pages, Lynn, there's a letter from June 2017 from Robinson &amp; Cole to Mr. Palmer, the planner at the time. And it's the same thing, Lynn, you'll see the noted text when you get down. when you get down, think about three more pages. It's the middle, page three. Perfect. And then, the same representations were again made to the staff and submitted, that it was not the intention to increase any aspect of the foundation's operations or its impact to the site, or especially on its neighbors. And in the following paragraph, the foundation stated, "Has no plans to develop further except for 82 Pudding Hill Road, which has two structures that are not used at the present." And then, at the conclusion of its presentation, which is the next document, again, Lynn, about six or seven pages down, we have the Grace's representations, which were from its closing presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission in seeking its special permit approval, and it's right on the next page, right there, that they highlight that they intend no expansion or alteration of structures at Grace Farms, no increase in the pace of activity or intensity of use. But in fact, in light of the wording of condition 30, which limited the Operations Center to its... The Operations Center for security purposes, condition 41, which prohibited the use of 82 Pudding Hill Road as anything other than a single-family home. What you see in the next document is an email that indicates that Grace took a friendly appeal from the 2017 special permit. And then, in the next document, Lynn, it's at the bottom of page nine in the next document, Grace made, proposed some changes in a revised application to the Planning and Zoning Commission that would in fact modify condition 30. Two more pages, page nine. Right there. So, that proposed modifications to both the Operations Center and then also to 82 Pudding Hill Road to be allowed for administrative offices and maintenance activities. Ultimately, again, back to condition 41, that was prohibited by the existing special permit. This was the proposed change, and Grace Farms Foundation ultimately withdrew this application in front of Planning and Zoning, including this request to modify condition 30. And also, that would have eliminated, on page 11, would have eliminated the condition 41. You can see that it's stricken right there. And so, what this meant was that under the existing special permit, Grace could not follow through with its plan to use the 82 Pudding Hill Road property for its administrative offices. And in fact, what they were left with was trying to figure out how that could be used and then simultaneously with the modifications that were going on, both in the scope of this special permit, but also in connection with the Operations Center, as we had gone into much more detail. The Unchained Foundation was also instituted at that point. We updated the timeline that we had previously submitted to you to reflect the representations that were made to the commission in 2017 and put in the information with respect to not only the Operations Center information we had previously provided, but also with respect to the West Barn renovations that proceeded. Almost on parallel path, the West Barn material, or excuse me, West Barn renovation was completed shortly before the Operations Center was completed. And I've included in the package of materials that we had submitted, as I said, the updated timeline for Unchained, as well as the information we had submitted with respect to showing the overlapping leadership between the two organizations, the fact that all of these events were included, number one, took place at Grace Farms, and two, were included in the Grace Farms in a report to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm happy to walk through both of those documents with you if there are any questions, but I think everyone's likely familiar with or recalls some of that information. So, in the interest of time, like I said, I'd be happy to do that. But if you want to or have any further questions about how we believe the expansion of Unchained overlaps with the uses that were in the renovations of the West Barn offices, we believe that frankly, both the Unchained itself creation and the growth of Grace Farms Foundation were the reason that this sort of end run around the existing special permit took place. And the, turning to the document, Lynn, it's the document entitled Site Usage.
This one?
Thank you. Yep, up to the top. Perfect. Yep, that's the first page. Thank you. So, what you can see from this chart that we have prepared is that the foundation has done, frankly, exactly what it represented to the commission it did not intend to do, which was increase the intensity and site use of the site. As you can see in all of these information, as noted in the notes, highlight that they are taken from the information that Grace itself has submitted to the Planning and Zoning in either their monthly program calendars and their attendance reports. And they also exclude people who are cardholders and don't have to stop and access the guard booth. They don't cover anything that would be outside the scope of the special permit. So, for example, as noted in the box, the Tim Tebow Night to Shine event, because that is allegedly hosted by Grace Community Church and is outside. The event, those are excluded from these monthly numbers. And the tour buses that may come to the property are also excluded from these counts. So, as you'll see, despite the representation, they have had a year-over-year increase of visitors of 41% and employee increase of approximately 9% from 2017 to 18. And we expect that when the 2019 annual report comes out, you would see a similar increase. The entirely new creation of Unchained and their staff all have been increased since the 2017 permit was issued with its representations that there would be no, that there was no intention to continue to expand. In the staff report, there's a comment about the parking lot acting as a limitation. Obviously, the parking lot limitation is quite inapplicable because it continues, as the documents, excuse me, as the numbers themselves show, demonstrates that they can have continued, the foundation can have continued growth well beyond any kind of limitation that would be apparent in the parking lot. The tours, the letter that I also included from attorney Andy Zabatakas had also talked about various events and things that happened outside of the permit scope. So, the remainder of those documents are just additional support for the visitors and the activity that we believe has continued to take place on the site. So, what this has done is basically the foundation has been able to avoid the effect of condition six about the prohibition on intensification, as well as the prohibition on the office use that had been originally requested for 82 Pudding Hill in 41. And the way they have done this is by renovating the West Barn to include additional offices. So, Lynn, if you could pull up the exhibit entitled, it's right there, the Approved 2012 Plans. Perfect. And attached, just at the end of this for information, we don't need to go to it, is confirmation from the Planning and Zoning staff that these are the correct approved plans. And so, if you scroll down, what I had done in here was knowing we were gonna have to zoom in. So, this is the plan for the West Barn. This is a sheet, and if you could just go to the next page, Lynn. So, the area that we're talking about is on the right-hand side of your screen. It is the area, right, exactly, that Lynn's circling. It's the former trash area and storage that was shown on the Approved 2012 Plans. That has been converted into these offices that are included in our original application package. They are, that was exhibit... Exhibit F in our original application materials. And that has, that area previously marked as trash and storage has been converted not only into storage, but three additional offices and a common area. As you can see from the zoomed-in portion, it's about 800, 900 square feet or so that was converted into those offices. As noted in the staff report, there was a discussion about how this is similar to a reconfiguration of cubicle space or into offices or a kitchen renovation. I think if we can just scroll down, I want to show you the plans for the East Barn. And in contrast here, the plans for the East Barn show the various, show some various office space, again, at the right-hand side. And so, if you read the scope of condition six and what the intention was to avoid any intensification, I think the staff memo, where suggesting that you could reconfigure existing space with a zoning permit would be true in a situation like the East Barn, where you had, the Planning and Zoning Commission had shown and approved offices in that space. And if those offices were reconfigured to, you know, for example, from two smaller offices into one larger office or somehow reconfigured in their current, or from their approved layout, that that would be something that could be done with a zoning permit without the need to return to the commission. But in fact, here, what has happened is that this took unoccupied space and converted it into usable floor area. And we believe it was done, frankly, in violation of condition six, number one, and frankly, to get around the desire or the prohibition in condition 41 and allow the additional offices that were not ultimately approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission for the 82 Pudding Hill property. And so, ultimately here, these approved plans were frankly, the basis for what the commission was looking at in 2017. There are a variety of other things that appear to be frankly inconsistent with how these buildings are being used. They show classrooms, and we certainly aren't aware. In fact, if you scroll up to the West Barn and even here, there are various, you know, pre-K through third-grade classrooms. So, clearly, there's been some modification here. And whether that was permissible or not, but that's somewhat beyond the scope here. So, at the end of the day, condition six is what controls the materials that we've submitted both previously before you and with respect to how the building has, how the West Barn has changed since the approval of the plans, both in 2012 and then in light of the 2017 approval, we believe constitutes an intensification of the use of the site in violation of condition six. The zoning permit should not have been issued. Notably, the staff report does not make any reference to condition six or explain why condition six would not be applicable to this situation. And so, that would be a question I would raise to either Ms. Abney or Mr. Winter, who was the one who issued the zoning permit. And we believe that the, in light of the intensification of the site, the zoning permit should be revoked and should not be reissued until Grace Farms Foundation returns to the commission and gets an interpretation from them as to whether these changes to the West Barn were appropriate and could be validly completed under the 2017 approval or a new approval would be, an amended approval would be required to allow those uses, particularly in light of condition 41. And given the fact that we believe the zoning permit is invalid, we continue to disagree with the interpretation that the zoning permit cannot, excuse me, that we cannot challenge the building permit and CO here. The process outlined in the staff memo with respect to the building permit relates to things that are frankly, building code appeals, where the building official is looking at something related to the building code because, and we believe that's true, because the building, fill of the building permit through the code enforcement process results in an appeal to the State Building Committee. It is not a zoning appeal process. So, our position is that the building permit was based upon a zoning permit related to the zoning issues and shouldn't have been issued without that and under the statutes. The building permit and CO cannot legally and validly exist. So, those should be, should also be revoked under the authority. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I don't know whether we're gonna turn to attorney O'Hanlon or questions first, so I will await.
Are there questions from the board? John Mahoney.
Hi, it's John Mahoney. Just, I want to be sure I understood something you said. You said that the West Barn was completed slightly before the Operations Center.
Correct. So, the West Barn building permit, or excuse me, the CO for the West Barn was actually issued in May of 2019. The CO for the Security Operations Center was not issued until June of 2019. So, even though the Operations Center zoning permit was pulled first, that was the second CO issued.
So, my question there is, if I recall the prior appeal, it like this one was found through a FOIA application. Did this activity not appear at that time?
Correct. So, as we noted... Right. So, actually, the affidavits that my client had, or the affidavits that my clients had submitted, this was not, the West Barn was not submitted or mentioned in any of the Freedom of Information appeals that we had submitted. They actually saw some construction activity, like a dumpster on the property, and then went looking to see whether some permits or anything else had been issued. And that's when they found the permit for the West Barn. It was not, as noted in their affidavits, was not submitted in connection with the Freedom of Information request or in connection with the Operations Center.
So, I just want to be sure I completely understand, because in the Operations Center, and my recollection could be off. My recollection was that the... My recollection was that, and I'm sorry, this is John Mahoney. The operator, you made, if I recall, a similar request to the town asking for permit activity. And if this work was ongoing at the time and in fact was completed around the same time, it didn't come up then?
The permit request was for the specific building permit number filed.
But how would you know a building permit, a building permit was filed if you were having to make this through a FOIA request? You had to have noticed before then of the activity? Again, maybe I'm missing the logic. If the request was based off of a particular permit number, you hadn't noticed that something was going on, right? And I would have assumed you would have had the response, if I recall, or the request was for any permit, permit activity or building activity at the time.
For this appeal or for the operations center?
My recollection is when you did the operations center request, you did it more broadly than just, you know, a particular permit. It was a more broad, you know, request on what activity is going on on the site. You found at the time, there was the operations center work. And my recollection was at that time, there weren't dumpsters or other things that set you off to it. So I just want to be sure that I understand the sequencing of events.
Right. So the first, the operations center zoning permit was discovered in connection with the, I believe, the broader Freedom of Information. I can double check, but that was discovered separately from this and was made specifically about the operations center. It was not produced, it was permit materials with respect to what was going on at the operations center. It wasn't any building permit on the Grace Farms property because that would have covered work that was done 10 years ago or five years ago in construction, connection to current buildings. And then this, there was, there was never a discussion with the staff or any other members of the building department about other work that was going on on the property. It was specific, that one was specific to the, to the operations center. And then this one was issued, the building permit was issued after. And this one, this one we discovered because my clients had seen a construction, like I said, a construction dumpster out on the property and went looking to figure out what it was in the building permit system.
Can I ask a question? I just, Amy, I just want to...
Pete, just say your name.
Yeah, it's Pete Gelderman, I'm sorry.
I was wondering who that was because I couldn't quite see you.
It's a little dark in here, but anyway. You mentioned that the, that the, your client saw construction, you know, material out there in a dumpster and whatever. And that's when they became aware of the, of the work on the West Barn. But...
No, actually, what they, they saw construct, Amy Sutens, sorry. They actually saw a construction dumpster by 82 Putin Hill Road and they thought that there was construction work going on at 82 Putin Hill. And so they went looking to find if a building permit had been issued in connection with, with that property and then found out that this building permit had actually been issued in connection with the West Barn.
Okay. And when was that exactly?
The beginning of January. It was, it was within the 15 days of when we filed the appeal.
Okay.
John Mahoney, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Laura. Wait a second.
Luke has a question.
Yeah, Jessica has a question. Yeah.
And Luke, Luke has a question.
Can you, can you speak?
You hear me?
Yes.
So here's my question. The role of town council is, is the board supposed to ask questions? Does town council advise the board on legal issues or how, procedurally, how does this go? I don't know the answer to that. And I guess that's a question for, for the town council.
No, the board asked questions.
Pete, just say your name.
Yeah, it's Pete Gelderman. I just asked that question, Luke, because it wasn't clear to me what, that Amy was talking about the construction, you know, when that construction debris was located. So that was the only reason I asked the question. It just wasn't clear to me. But she answered it. So I thought if it wasn't clear to me, maybe it wasn't clear to anybody else.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure of how this was proceeding.
Laura, Jessica Cardone has her hand raised as well.
Jessica, did you have a question?
Yes, it's not related to the permit. It's related to the argument of the appellant's, at least one aspect of it. I just wanted to clarify that I understood the argument that was being put forth. There was comparisons made as between East Barn and West Barn based on the plans that had been submitted by Grace Farms, where East Barn had been shown to be intended for office use, whereas West Barn had been shown to be intended for unoccupied or storage. And it appeared that the argument would be that some type of interior reconfiguration of the East Barn would not have been an intensification under the special permit versus the West Barn where storage space was going to be converted to office space. And I just wanted to make sure I understood that as what the argument was.
Right. And so that's...
Amy, could you just say your name for the record, please?
Sorry. Right, I keep forgetting. Amy Sutens. And in fact, that's what I was trying to point out with the East Barn was sort of responding to the issue in the staff memo where they're talking about the fact that because there was no exterior renovation, or excuse me, exterior expansion of the building and that it was strictly interior, that that, that, it seems to me, and I would, I would ask staff to clarify this, that that's their interpretation of condition six. My point in illustrating the East Barn is that the East Barn was clearly approved to have some sort of office space. And so that, if they reconfigured that, it's already approved as office and sort of inherently can't be an intensification because it was already, that space was already approved for office by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This space that's labeled trash holding and storage was never approved for office by the Planning and Zoning Commission. These are the plans that the, that the commission has approved. There was, there was no approved change to these. And so thinking about what, what was presented to the commission and the desire to expand office use to other parts of the property that was then denied by the commission seems like an end run around that prohibition by taking space that wasn't approved for office and intensifying it by turning it into office. It's unfinished trash and storage space and now it's occupiable office space. And so I believe that under the interpretation and all the representations that were made to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it violates both the wording of condition seven and certainly what was the intent behind condition 41 and the commission's desire not to see additional buildings or space used as offices.
John Mahoney, did you have a question?
Yes, I have two questions. The first one, do you know when the annual report for GFF is due out?
To Planning and Zoning or their regular annual report?
The one that would provide the same growth rates and everything that was in the document that you showed us.
I believe it's usually, hold on, I'm just trying to see. Think the last one. Just looking to see if the... Prior annual report had a date on it. The 2000... The 2018 annual report that we provided in the document has figures through 12/31/2018. We've looked for the 2019. I will represent that my clients have looked for it and have not yet located it. Frankly, we looked as recently as last week, but we haven't seen it yet.
Okay. The, I'll ask the same question when we get to Grace Farms. But with regard to parking, you'd mentioned that it's effect, it's not an effective limitation to the growth and showed the growth numbers from that same report through 18. And I guess it had 19 numbers in there as well, the monthly numbers. So my, my question is, you know, you're leaning on all the growth being sort of a proof of intensification, growth in parking. And if, if there was to be no growth, that would have effectively meant that the parking restrictions were intended to cap the number of cars at what they were in 2017. Otherwise, by nature, you would see growth numbers, right? If the parking was not being fully utilized and if Grace Farms' programming is successful, you would have actually growth. Not, I guess I'm trying to understand parking growth as proof of intensification.
It's, it's actually not parking growth. We, the staff memo suggests that parking growth is how you manage the activity on the site. That's actually, the staff report says, "It's apparent the Planning and Zoning Commission recognizes that controlling the number of parking spaces on-site is a key component in managing the level of activity at the Grace Farms site." And our position is, it's not an effective control because when you look at Grace's own numbers, with, with the same number of parking spaces, they have a 41% year-over-year growth in visitors. So clearly, parking's not an adequate control of usage of the site. And that's in our estimation because you can have a tour bus come and bring whatever number of people and there's, there's, those are, those are dealt with separately and not, you could have more events, more events on the property and that's expanding the intensity and the frequency of the use of the property. And that's how you get this year-over-year growth and the parking lot has no relationship to that.
But what, but by putting the...
John, just state your name.
I'm sorry, Lynn. I apologize. John Mahoney again. By, the town put in these very, or Planning and Zoning put in these very detailed parking requirements along with reporting on them. If their intent was to show no growth at all, I would have assumed that they would have capped the parking at a level that wouldn't have allowed for the growth that you're seeing. The flip being, if they didn't cap it at that level in 2017, they were allowing for some level of visitor growth.
I think that's undermined by the various conditions where they were trying to, you know, condition six is pretty clear. No intensification. You know, in the, in the non-conforming use category or universe, intensification comes up and you're allowed, you're typically allowed to intensify a non-conforming use, but you're not allowed to expand a non-conforming use. Here, the condition specifically says no intensification. And if you're going to give any kind of credence to condition six, intensification needs to mean something other than expanding a building as, as the position taken in the staff report because otherwise, it's, it's not necessarily just intensification. It's, then it's expansion or it's additional structures or whatever else it could be. I think there has to be something given, some weight given to intensification. Ultimately, the fact that we're having this discussion goes back to the very relief that we're asking. The zoning permit should be revoked until the Planning and Zoning Commission, as the entity that issued condition six weighs in on this. That ultimately, planning and zoning should have been consulted in connection with the issue of this zoning permit. There's no representation here that, that was done. It was certainly never brought to the commission in its, you know, on an agenda or in that kind of format. So sort of the debate is the reason for the relief that we're seeking. Ultimately, it should go back to the commission for an interpretation. Staff disagrees with us and that's why you're here. That they, they disagree. They think a zoning permit should be issued. And, and we disagree and we think that you have the authority to say, you know what, condition six should mean something and it should mean that the Planning and Zoning Commission is consulted about these kinds of changes that result in an intensification of the use on the property.
Could, Laura? I was going to say, could we have a little bit more of a definition of intensification? Just for my own clarity?
Sure. That, that as I've, as I've explained, intensification typically comes up in the context of non-conforming uses. Where if you have, for example, a non-conforming auto body business, it's, it's a good example. You can't add on to that building and expand the non-conforming use because that's an expansion of a non-conforming use. So you can't add another garage bay. And even though you're non-conforming, you can't add another garage bay, even if it's otherwise zoning compliant, and expand the, the non-conforming use. You can however, under the, under the law of non-conformities, service more cars in your existing non-conforming use. So you are allowed to intensify. So if you were open for six hours a day and you serviced 10 cars and you decide to be open for 10 hours a day and service 30 cars, even though you're a non-conforming use, you can, you can intensify your use, but you can't physically expand it in the non-conformity universe. And so our position is that using the word intensification, and it's not just expansion, which would cover something where you, you add on to one of these, these buildings or you add another structure, but, but in order to differentiate a more intense use of the site, there's, there's a condition that says no intensification. And we spent lots of time throughout the planning and zoning process, which extended, you know, well over a year, talking about... planning and zoning process, which extended, you know, well over a year, talking about what's an appropriate level of usage of the site as far as impact on the neighbors or other considerations. So I think ultimately, the nonconformity universe of intensification is the most helpful guidance, because planning and zoning didn't provide any other definition. But again, I think to give it some meaning, it has to be something beyond or other than a physical expansion of the building, because then you could just say, "Expand." And Grace said it wasn't going to do that either, but the commission specifically said, "No intensification." And so words have meaning, and that's what we believe it was intended to do.
Okay, looks like John has, and then Jessica?
So by that definition, is it your position that any growth in visitor activity since the signing that agreement in 2017 is a violation of the agreement?
Any visitor growth?
Well, yeah. I mean, pick whatever measure you threw out to us, which I think was visitor growth when you were challenging parking. You're using visitor growth as a proxy for intensification. And so since it's gone up since the date that the, as reported, since the date of the signing of the agreement or the special use permit, then I would assume you think that anything above a 0% growth constitutes an intensification.
Right. So I think there are two pieces to that. Number one, I think...
Amy, state your name for the...
Sorry, I keep forgetting. Amy Souchen. I think anything beyond what I would characterize as a de minimis visitor growth would certainly be an intensification. I suspect Grace might disagree with me. But certainly, reusing or renovating these structures to allow more employees, to allow growth in employees, to allow growth of what the foundation can provide, is certainly an intensification. I mean, if three people come in a car versus two people come in a car, that's one issue. But now, what we have before you is, you are taking a part of a building that was designated and approved for basically unoccupable, you know, what I would characterize as back-of-house space, you know, much like your basement, and turning it into usable office space, so then Grace Farms doesn't need to go lease space in downtown New Canaan for offices for its employees. It's intensifying the number of employees that are on its property, and thus expanding or intensifying its operations. And do I think that that runs counter to everything that they represented to the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2017, as I've shown you tonight? Yes. So I think there's visitor growth as one element, but the sheer physical changes that we're talking about at issue in this zoning permit.
I mean, just, it's John Mahoney again, as one last follow-up, and then I'll stop. I mean, the last appeal was over three people, based on the things we just saw. I don't, how many people are you saying that this intensifies the use by?
It's at least the same. The office space has... Three. Right, there are three offices and additional common area, as well as some small storage that's left. So it's three, at least. I don't know if those are, you know, shared offices or anything like that. That's not specifically called out. But again, this goes back to, the condition isn't worded as anything other than a de minimis intensification, or a nominal change to the, you know, it talks about any material change in use or intensification.
Okay, Jessica, you had a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up. Initially, this is Jessica Carden.
Can you speak, Jessica?
Yeah, I don't know. I thought I could hear someone speaking in the background.
I do, too.
Can you hear me, Amy? That's what's...
I can, I was gonna say, I can hear you.
Okay, so the initial definition you gave us for intensification is kind of the default would be non-conforming, where I took it to mean that it wasn't necessarily about increased use within performance, but more about expanding the nonconformity. And then, when there was further discussion of kind of factual scenarios, it did seem to me that these are two scenarios where you would still argue that it was intensification despite it not necessarily be non-conforming. So the first scenario would be not necessarily non-conforming, and that would be, let's say, in the East Barn, which was identified for employee office use, they decided to renovate for a standing desk environment so that they could accommodate 20 employees there instead of five. Now, that would be non-conforming, like your auto body example, but it sounds like, based on the discussion you just had with John, you would still be arguing that that's an intensification, because maybe perhaps that would result in adding 15 employees to the headcount.
Right. And so just...
Amy, just state your name.
Sorry, Amy Souchen. Just to be clear, I don't want the ZBA to, or any of you to be, to think that I'm making an argument that there's something non-conforming here. Intensification comes up in the non-conforming context. This use is allowed in the zone. There's a special permit for it. There's not a question of nonconformity here. But yes, do I think that if you had a situation where you renovated the offices, you know, this space or the office space from what was two people to 25 people? Yeah, I do think that could be an intensification. If it's reconfiguring two offices to two offices, or, for example, the sanctuary volume here, where, you know, there's a certain number, there's a certain capacity of the sanctuary portion of the building. If that was renovated to double the number of people that could be in that particular portion of the building, that gets into other conditions of the special permit. But I also think that that would be an impermissible intensification, because the commission approved, here is the building, and it's allowed a certain number of, we've approved a certain number of people, and if you're going to reconfigure it and expand that number, that would be an intensification. And like I said, because that particular issue is covered by other conditions as well, it would likely trigger other things. But I do think that Condition 6 would be applicable in that situation.
And this is Jessica Carden, just with a quick follow-up. If they were, just to, I want to make sure I'm understanding all of your arguments, various fact patterns in my head. Let's say they moved three employees from the East Barn offices to the newly renovated, for instance, West Barn offices. There was no change in headcount, but because West Barn wasn't originally intended for office use, that's what you're arguing for these...
Exactly. Right. You're intensifying, you're intensifying the office component of the property.
Okay. Even though it's not a change in headcount, I just wanted to make sure I understood mentally the different fact patterns.
We believe that Grace's own numbers demonstrates that there's an increase in headcount, but it's the conversion of unoccupable space into, you know, into office space. I mean, if, for example, they, you know, one of these volumes functions as a library. If they reconfigured the library and they needed to pull a building permit to reconfigure, but it's still a library in its same basic fashion, I don't think that wouldn't be an intensification, because you're simply doing what I think of as kind of architectural changes, or, you know, closer to, you know, what you would think of as, you know, moving, as Lynn's memo points out, moving your refrigerator to one side. When you get into the issue of taking space that was previously unoccupied, turning it into occupable space in light of Condition 6, that's what we believe should be a decision made by the commission, not by the staff in the context of the zoning permit.
Okay, let's hear from Ben, and then we'll hear from Attorney O'Hanlon.
Hi, Amy. This is Ben Byless.
Hi. Trying to find you on screen.
Over here on the left side. I'm looking at the visitation chart that came out of the 2018 report by Grace Farms, right?
Right.
You contend that those numbers of visits violate special permit condition where it has the activity chart, I think it's 16, and it says you can't have more than 500 people for this kind of event, or 200 people for this kind of event. Do these numbers that are visits for 18 and 19, do they violate that chart?
Conceptually, I will say no. We have issues with whether things are properly reported. But I would say, on a general level, the point of the visitors is that there are visitors who are coming to the property and resulting in a usage of the site far beyond what the commission understood it was going to do, and frankly, outside some of the parameters in the, sort of, event limitations. So, for example, it could be that all of these people are just visitors on a Saturday, and so are not covered by a particular category of event, you know, that the event levels are for specific events, not for, you know, just the general public. That's where we get into a discussion about the parking as a limitation, et cetera. But these numbers are just growth. Whether or not they, events are properly counted, I'll admit, is a little bit beyond both this chart and this appeal.
Okay, this is Ben again. I don't understand why you just don't file a complaint to the P&amp;Z that Grace Farms is in violation of its special permit in the various ways you are now telling us they are.
And I will tell you, we have brought the issue to the staff. We have, there is, we can't file a complaint with the commission. The commission isn't the entity that enforces. It's frankly, your staff that's on the call, that's the enforcement.
It would seem to me more appropriate, I'm sorry, it's Ben Byless again, to ask the staff to make that finding, and as I recall, we went through this a couple of years ago, and the staff referred it to P&amp;Z. And that's how we got back into another set of hearings over this. If the, I think you ought best to go to the staff, ask them to find violations, and if they don't, then appeal that.
We, the town has taken the position that the staff not acting on our complaint is not an appealable decision. We talked about this a little bit last time, and I'm sure Attorney Gelderman would be happy to get into it with you, but we can appeal this. But if, for example, we file a complaint with Lynn and she disagrees with us, we can't, the town's position is we can't appeal that to anyone.
You could appeal it and find out whether or not the town is right.
No, we actually can't, because Attorney Gelderman's position is that it's not a valid appeal to you. It's to you, because it's a zoning enforcement issue, and then it comes to the ZBA.
Ultimately, you would have an appeal to court to decide the question of whether their refusal to do what you ask is in fact an appeal.
I'll let Pete explain his position to you, but that's my understanding.
Okay.
Looks like...
We can't, we can't appeal when we don't have something, there's no action. And his position is we can't appeal in inaction.
Who's he?
Attorney Gelderman.
Luke, looks like Luke has a question?
Luke? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't know why it times out on me when I get off and on. Amy, this is Luke Tash speaking. Isn't it your position that you can't go to the P&amp;Z? I don't understand where Ben's question came from. I thought you couldn't go to the P&amp;Z. The procedure is you ask the zoning enforcement officer. If they don't listen, if they don't agree with you, then you would appeal to the ZBA. If the ZBA doesn't agree with you, you appeal to the Superior Court. But the only way, how, I'm not following Ben's question, but how would you get back in front of the P&amp;Z unless we deny this? I mean, unless we granted your appeal.
If you grant it, then Grace needs to go to P&amp;Z, because they don't have a valid zoning permit. But ultimately, it's, okay, I'll defer to Pete on his legal position.
I don't want to defer to Pete on it. I want to know what your position is, because it was my understanding, now I might be wrong, that there's no, there's no appeal from the zoning enforcement officer to P&amp;Z. It has to go to the ZBA.
Correct. Correct. So, and I will tell you, this is what we discussed when we were before you last time. I tried to file an appeal of Lynn not taking enforcement action, and was told that that is not an appealable decision, and they would not present it to you to be considered.
Pete, did you want to comment?
Well, sure. I mean, that's correct. The law in Connecticut is fairly clear that the failure to act is not an appealable decision by the zoning enforcement officer. That's not to say that Amy couldn't have another remedy. She could seek some kind of declaratory relief, which is not an administrative appeal. And a court might, you know, hear that. But the law is pretty clear, the Reardon case is pretty clear, that says that a failure to enforce is not a decision that's appealable to the ZBA. It's not the kind of decision.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
What's the site for that Reardon case?
I don't have it in front of me, Luke. I'm home, or, you know. But it's Reardon, R-E-A-R-D-O-N.
And it's Connecticut Appeals Court, Supreme Court, or what is it?
I think it was a Supreme Court case.
Yeah, I was trying to see appellate.
Was it appellate?
I believe it was the, you know, I'm actually not sure. I was looking to see if I have it. I have the benefit of actually at least being in my office.
About how long ago was it? I mean, if I look Reardon up, I'm gonna get like 1,000 cases.
No, it was in the last...
I think if you look up Reardon versus ZBA, you'll get it.
Okay, Reardon versus ZBA?
Yeah. I want to say, was it Wallingford? I don't remember.
Hi, Darian.
Darian, okay.
Okay, I can get that then. Thank you.
Okay, should we hear from Attorney Hanlon?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't mean to interrupt.
Can you just state your name?
I'm sorry, Ted O'Hanlon for Grace Farms. I don't want to interrupt y'all's questions. I just had a couple items asking clarification from Amy about some of the documents she submitted, but I can wait until y'all have finished your questions, or I can say no.
I think you should go ahead.
Okay. I would just like some clarification of what the timeline that was provided by the appellant's means. I mean, we've just gone through this entire discussion of converting unoccupied space to offices. I understand... I understand that aspect of the argument. I, I, what I intend to do before the next hearing is to put Grace Farms' position in writing so that we can, it can shorten the proceeding a little bit, at least as far as our presentation is. But what does the timeline mean? And when, when, when Ms. Sutchen offered it earlier, she said, I think you can read it and figure it out. I, I'd like her to state what it means as respects to, to this appeal and, and what it, um, and why she submitted it. And, and the same reason for the, um, the chart of, of visits. Um, again, I think she conceded that the increase, and I think Mr., um, Mahoney asked this, that the increase in the number of visitors wouldn't be an intensification. And I don't understand how this chart relates at all to the zoning permit mistake that she has used to get before you. So if she could clarify those, it would help me articulate better Grace Farms' defense because this is the first time I'm hearing this. And respectfully, could we not refer to the record of whatever the proceeding was about the Operation Center? Because that's not part of this. And there was a whole lot of discussion with a lot of pronouns about it and they and it that I just didn't follow earlier. This is a new appeal of a new, of a different permit and a different timeframe. And I just want to make sure that we have a proper record without reference to some, some prior proceeding that you and I may understand as we sit here, but it's not going to be clear to a court that reviews this. And, and, and trust me, that's where this is headed. So, um, that, I just would like some clarification about those two documents and, and especially how it relates, how they relate to the error that is claimed in this, in the zoning permit that was issued, from which this appeal is taken for the West Barn only.
Sure. So, um, I guess to address a couple of things. Number one, um, given Ted's comment, I do think and would request that this Oh, sorry. Amy Sutchen's, um, would request that we, and we have them available, um, incorporate the transcripts from the, the prior, from the prior appeal um, into, into this record. So in the event that either the, you know, the, the board members now want to go back and look at those, um, you know, the discussion that we were having at that point, they're, they're certainly available, um, to them and they were, they were emailed. Um, so they, they are available and should be incorporated into this, into this record.
Did you hear something? Uh, no? Please, oh. Attorney O'Hanlon, did you have your
Yes, thank you. I would, I would have, I don't want to interrupt Amy. She's finished. I would have wanted to object to incorporating that record. That matters on appeal.
I, I just asked for the, the transcripts of the meetings because we've, we've talked about what was discussed at those meetings tonight. If, if you or anybody else, I mean, they, they can, the trans, I can put anything I want into the record. And I'm asking that those documents be, those, those two transcripts be included in this record. You can, you can object, but they're in the record.
They're, they're not in the record. They weren't submitted in advance of this hearing and put in the record. And I urge you to talk to your counsel. I don't want to give, be perceived as giving y'all's advice. But that is, that request was not made before this, this hearing was open and there was plenty of time for it to have been done. Um, I urge you to talk to your counsel about that. That's a decision you, you can make of your own discretion. But I strongly urge, urge against it because, again, what they're seeking is a second bite at that apple. You've already decided it and you've already submitted it to the court and it has not been resolved. I apologize, Ms. Tashin, I didn't see your hand up.
Luke, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Miracle. Um, I want to ask that question of Town Counsel too. Can, is it appropriate to incorporate that back into it? I have some reservations on it as opposed to, um, as opposed to if it, Amy wants to bring it up now, I'm fine with her bringing up specific materials and things like that, but to incorporate the entire, an entire other proceeding? I, I don't, what's the law on that?
If, if Amy wants to present that as an exhibit, she's entitled to do that. It's only the, um, it's the transcript that she's asking to be incorporated into the record of this proceeding. He's entitled to do that.
Okay. Okay. I, I didn't know the answer to that.
Yeah. The, the relevance, the relevance and the weight of that really is something for this board, for you guys to determine, but, but she can incorporate it into the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Well,
Laura, Ted O'Hanlon has his hand raised.
Mr. O'Hanlon, Attorney O'Hanlon.
Thank you. I did, I just, um, well, normally that might be okay, but under the rules, under the governor's executive order, whatever information she wanted you to see should have been put into this record before we got here tonight. And that hadn't, that has not been done. Further, that rec, that transcript is not a standalone document. It refers to a, a stack of, of documents that she uses exhibits that are, you know, throughout it. I, I just, you know, you, respectfully, this is a different special, a different zoning permit for a different building in a different period of time. The idea that somehow any of that, those materials relate to this, um, is, is preposterous. They don't. What is the defect that staff made in signing off on that zoning permit for the West Barn that poss, that can possibly have had anything to do with events of the Operation Center? And then, so I'm, you know, again, the purpose of these appellants is to get another bite at the apple that they didn't get before and, and to inject more and more uncertainty in this. And, and, and you are following right down that path if you incorporate that record. If you keep these as distinct appeals, one relating to one building and one, and one zoning permit for, for a building permit and one relating to the West Barn and a zoning permit relating to that, you will make your life a lot easier, but you also make my life a lot easier. I'll, I'm self, I don't want to pretend I'm looking after you more than my client. But, but these are completely discreet issues. And I, again, I would, I would object to doing that because it's not as simple as a hard transcript, which you could do if it was the same matter. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Gelderman in that regard. That was another matter under a different permit. And, and again, it hasn't even resolved by the court. If the court resolves it in a way that we didn't anticipate and you've acted using it in this matter, then you've, there's complications in two matters, not one. Thank you.
Attorney Sutchen's, did you, were you going?
Yeah. So I guess there are, there are two things.
Amy just
Amy Sutchen's. Um, one, as, as, um, Pete stated, I can incorporate and have asked for the transcripts to, to be, to be added to the record. Number two, um, the executive order that, that Attorney O'Hanlon is referencing relates to materials that I was going to speak to tonight. Frankly, it was one of those things that as we were talking, um, I didn't expect that we would need to reference the, the transcripts, but, but clearly we do and I think they should be incorporated. There is nothing about that executive order that prohibits me from incorporating those into the record. And in fact, we can do that for the, for the next continuation because Attorney O'Hanlon has already submitted a letter for the record asking for this hearing to be kept open tonight. Um, so to the extent that we need to incorporate a document and it will be available for everybody to look at and discuss, um, prior to the, to the next hearing, problem, frankly, problem solved. Um, and then tying it back to the, to the two documents he talked about specifically, which were the, the timeline for Unchained and the, the related documents. Um, as I said, in the interest of time, um, I did not want to repeat um, the discussion, somewhat lengthy discussion that I had provided um, during the last, um, uh, hearing where I went through in, in some great detail, the creation of Unchained, um, its relationship with Grace Farms, the number of events that have taken place on the property, and, um, simply reiterated our belief that we believe that the, um, foundation is operating out of the, out of the Grace Farms property. Um, we suspect that again, um, as with the Operation Center, um, some of those employees may be located in the, in the West Barn. Um, and that is the reason for incorporating, excuse me, for providing, um, that information in this record. And then with respect to the visitor information and the, um, information from the annual reports and such, um, again, it's simply to point out that, um, what, what has gone on in the property has been, um, an expansion and an intensification of the foundation's activities. And as a result of that, their staff has grown and thus the need for more office space, which is specifically what is at issue in this appeal. So the fact that they are adding offices, um, might just be, well, you know, a theoretical construct. But our belief is that the visitor data and growth of their staff is the direct reason for the, um, office expansion, um, in the, at issue in the, um, in the zoning permit. And so that is the, um, you know, it's, it's the reason behind, um, the, the zoning permit.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I've, you know, I've got a number of things to say on behalf of Grace Farms, but I'll, I'll wait. I'm sorry. Ted O'Hanlon, I've, I don't have any other questions at this time. Well, that, that'll be helpful in preparing our, our response. Thank you, ma'am.
Did you want to continue?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So Lynn, we, uh, so we will, is it at this point that we should say that we'll continue this until, is it next month, Lynn?
Yeah. May 4th. But, um, we just have that one person on the phone. Do we want to take additional public comment as well?
Sorry. Okay. Uh, is there a caller that would like to comment?
There's only just one that, uh, I don't know who it is. The phone number ending in 7047. Are you
No. No comment.
Okay. So, uh, it is at this point that we will say we will continue this matter uh, at our next meeting, which is, uh, the date of May 4th. Does, is that, um, does that sound okay to everyone?
Yes, ma'am.
That works for us.
Can I, can I simply say, if anybody has any legal questions they'd like me to answer in the interim, to send them to me or to Lynn and she can get them to me in writing?
That was Pete Gelderman, Town Counsel.
Yes, it was.
And Luke Tashin has his hand raised.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Are there any materials on the definition of what an intensification is?
Does anyone have that answer?
There are, there are, this is Ted O'Hanlon. Uh, there are some, some, um, case decisions that discuss intensification. There's probably a discussion of it in the fuller, um, book. Uh, I'm sure that Mr. Gelderman could provide them.
Yeah. It's in the context, as Amy said earlier, of non-conforming uses typically. Um, that's where intensification is usually used. The planning, it's really what the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, meant when they used the word intensification. I don't know if they, if they were using it in the context of typical non-conforming use or if it had a different meaning to them. But, um, we can certainly expand upon the definition of intensification as it's used in, uh, in the typical context, in the typical zoning context.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing from us.
Thank you all for your patience. This is my first experience of this. This is an interesting
You did a great job. Thank you.
Correct your name on your computer.
I apologize. I couldn't tie in with my laptop for some reason, so I grabbed my, my wife's iPad. So I apologize. That's my wife's name on there. I'm not, I'm not operating under a false flag. Pardon?
Is she the retired Supreme Court Justice or is that just coincidental?
I don't know if we need to go into that. That, that is
It's not a coincidence, but
Yeah.
And by the way, my name's not Lori either, so, uh,
Thank you. I haven't seen Pete in the whole process. I'm not sure where he is, but
Oh, I'm, I'm, I should be off the screen, so.
Yeah. I can't, um, I can't account for that name on there. I apologize. I'll try to fix it by the time we get back.
Okay. Thank you. Um, uh, you are welcome to stay on. The board members, we're going to stay on to approve the minutes, but, uh, otherwise, um, uh, have a good evening.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, board members, any thoughts on the minutes, um, from our last meeting?
Oh, Ben has, uh, Ben wants to say something.
Okay. Ben?
Wait one second. Yeah, there goes.
Um, I just, uh, there seems to be a typo in item three, in three, on 119 Weed Street. You have spelled the Carrioness's names differently in each case. Lynn has a Y. Nick does not.
Okay. We'll correct that. We'll go back to the record and find out.
Yeah. That looks like two different people.
Yeah. But I think in the, uh, application, they've spelled it both with a Y. And the documents that are not looking at tonight, but were in the agenda file, um, they're, they do have a Y.
Okay. We'll go back and crack that.
Thanks, Ben. Anything else?
Wait. John Tony has a, has a comment.
John?
One second.
Leave it, leave it to Ben to find something on an, on a matter we haven't even looked at yet.
I, I always go for the most important stuff, John.
Yeah. Thank you, Ben. You save us all the pain.
Okay. Do we have a, uh, motion to, uh, approve the minutes?
So move.
Who, who made the motion?
Ben?
Second.
Who made the second?
Becky Walsh. All those in favor?
Aye.
You just got to state your name for the record as you vote.
Hey, Laura Edmonds in favor?
Mahoney in favor.
Byless in favor.
Erdin in favor.
Walsh in favor.
Luke.
Luke in favor. Luke Tashin.
Richard?
Richard in favor.
Richard in favor.
Yes.
Yes.
This has been fun.
Okay. And Cynthia, are you still with us?
Yes. Let me unmute her. She is, hold on a second. Okay. Cynthia, you can talk now.
Cynthia, are, are you, you're still with us?
I am. I am still with you and it's been a, uh, quite an experience. And I've enjoyed it.
Well, welcome aboard and we look forward to getting to know you. And, uh, we've got a, a great group and we, um, uh, look forward to, to seeing you and, uh, being in your presence as we all will be at some point, hopefully, so.
And I'm looking forward to it also.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Lynn?
No. I think we're good. Uh, just to adjourn.
Okay.
9:44. Have a good night, everyone.
Bye.
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 Bye.